Good evening, everyone. We're going to call a meeting to order. And we'll start with the land acknowledgement statement. We acknowledge that the ground on which we live is the traditional territory of Caldwell First Nation, of the Three Fires Confederacy, and the original people of Point Pelee and Pelee Island, and its surrounding lands and waters, and that of the Huron Wendat and Windut peoples. We recognize and respect the First Nations who are stewards of the land and waters of Turtle Island, and who have embraced this stewardship since time immemorial. We would also like to acknowledge contributions of other nearby First Nation communities, and all original people across Turtle Island. We'll now have a moment of silent reflection, followed by the playing of our National Anthem. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Okay, if we can get an adoption of the agenda for the January 28th, 25, 2025 regular council meeting. Moved by Councilor Carrick, support by Councilor Richeau Spagnolo, all in favor? Matt Carries. Any disclosures of any interest? Nope, there being none. An adoption of the minutes of the special meeting of council held on January 9th, 2025, and regular meeting of council held on January 14th, 2025 be adopted as presented? Moved by Councilor Renault, support by Councilor Richeau Spagnolo, all in favor? And Matt Carries as well. Mayor's comments? So, just a few. Good evening and welcome. It was a busy week here in LaSalle. Our second fire station officially opened on January 19th at 2190 Front Road, and it is now in full operation. And we are planning a public open house this spring. Hopefully, everyone's settled over there, and things are going well, Chief. A huge congratulations to the LaSalle Police on the tremendous success of the first annual LaSalle Polar Plunge. I have a great video of Deputy Chief jumping, or diving, depending how we want to look at it. What do you want to call it?
It was an extended belly flop.
An extended belly flop. Either way, they set an original goal of $10,000, and far exceeded that, seeing over 140 jumpers and raising $51,000 for Special Olympics. Congratulations to everyone over at LaSalle Police. Again, on the first annual, we look forward to this event next year, and seeing it grow bigger and better. On Friday, we welcomed MPP Liardi to the Valmer Center for a special announcement. We were successful in a grant application for a seniors' active living center. The funding approved by the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility will help us to expand activities for seniors in LaSalle, and that will be over three different locations, which would be Town Hall, the Valmer, and the Event Center. And this aligns with our goal to provide more opportunities for seniors to stay connected and improve their overall well-being. So, LaSalle program over seniors and older adults, learning opportunities such as financial management. It also looks at elder abuse prevention, a variety of recreational social activities, including fitness, healthy lifestyle, and wellness classes that are important supports in our communities. We've also started our summer student hiring process. So, current job postings include positions in Public Works, Planning and Development. And next week, I believe, the Valmer Complex positions will be posted as well. So, please visit our employment page on our website for more information. And that's all I got for today. We have no public meetings or hearings, no presentations or delegations. So, we can go into item H1, Staff Reports and Correspondence for Council's Action, which is our Parkland Dedication Bylaw. Our Director of Planning and Development, Mrs. Beggs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Council will recall roughly a year ago now, we presented a parks plan to council for consideration as part of our ongoing effort to prepare and adopt a parkland dedication bylaw for the municipality. So, following that presentation, we launched into a joint public consultation effort with some of our neighboring municipalities to satisfy some of the statutory requirements of the process. And we are here tonight to propose that we adopt the Parkland Dedication Bylaw that we have developed in collaboration with Watson and Associates. This Parkland Dedication Bylaw will become a critical tool for the municipality to be able to secure parkland as the municipality develops. And so, we want to ensure that as our community grows, that the park system that we've envisioned for the municipality grows with it. And so, administration is doing quite a bit of work on the development of a parkland system in the Howard-Beaufort Secondary Plan. And the administrative team is doing quite an extensive update to the Parks Master Plan. And these are important documents which lay out sort of the policy framework and the direction that we're going in terms of developing the parkland system. And so, the Parkland Dedication Bylaw that we're proposing tonight will be a really important tool for us to be able to realize what we're trying to achieve in our policy documents. So, with that, we have Mr. Abbs here this evening to be able to walk us through the process that we undertook relative to the preparation of the bylaw, and walk us through the next steps in the process.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of council. I do have a brief presentation, just a few slides to kind of walk through the process, and just to kind of go back over a few of the things we talked about, because it was a year ago that I was here last. Perfect, then. Next slide, please. So, with respect to Parkland Dedication, and Ms. Beggs kind of provided an overview, the purpose of updating the policies is really to ensure that you're allowing the parkland system to grow with the community, with the new population, with the new employment coming to the community. One of the main reasons we started to look at this, and the other municipalities in the county also started to look at this, was in light of Bill 23. And if you recall, Bill 23 did reduce what you can collect through a number of revenue tools, Parkland Dedication being one of them, and as well, development charges. And so, in light of some of the reductions in your ability to collect revenue through those other revenue tools, I want to make sure that we're maximizing the opportunities we can under the updated legislation. So, if we go to the next slide, please? And one more. And so, in speaking about the process, so we did work with six municipalities in the county. So, Essex, Kingsville, Lake Shore, yourselves, Leamington, and Tecumseh. Essex, Lake Shore, and Tecumseh have already passed the bylaws at the end of last year. And then, we'll be looking to pass Kingsville and Leamington in February as well. And so, we started this process actually a few years ago, back in 2022. We had initial Parks Plan findings, did the initial analysis, provided a memo, and that was in August of '22. Then, Bill 23 came out, and we needed to update the analysis with respect to Bill 23, given the reductions and deductions in that. We provided the council presentation. It was exactly a year ago. And then, we had the joint consultation where all of the communities came together. We had one joint consultation with the development community, and there wasn't a lot of feedback from the community. I think they were just kind of taking all the information in. And then, one of the things we did here, though, and this is not just from the community, but also from administration, is that requiring developers to come in with every building permit and provide a valuation, land valuation, would be very onerous. And so, one of the things we talked about was, instead of requiring a land valuation, applying a calculation, we could just come up with a per-unit charge that's fair. And that's what the next step in the analysis was. And we commissioned a land appraiser to get us some land value so we could do that math. And I'll talk a little bit about that in the next couple of slides. Next slide, please. And so, just to refresher, there's really three sections of the Planning Act that relate to Parkland Dedication. And Section 51.1 relates to subdivisions, 53 relates to consents, and they're very similar, so we've kind of put them together. The other section is 42. So, under the Section 51.1, you don't need a bylaw, and this is how most municipalities in the area were getting Parkland Dedication. You don't need a bylaw, but as a condition of approval of the subdivision agreement or the consent, you can require either 5% of the land for residential or institutional development, or 2% for commercial or industrial. You can either take that in the form of actual land to build a park, or you can take that as payment in lieu of land, the value equivalent to the 5% or the 2%. You could also use this alternative rate for residential development, where when you get higher density development, it makes more sense to use this alternative rate. The main point here with Section 51.1 or 53 is the timing of when we value the land. So, if we're going to value the 5% of the land, it's at the day before the approval of the draft plan. So, unserviced land relatively low compared to once the land is fully constructed. So, if we move to Section 42, we need to pass a bylaw, but now it applies to all development and redevelopment. So, not just subdivisions or consents, but it can also apply to site plans and such. So, it's the same requirements, the 5%, the 2%, the alternative. But the main difference here is the value of the land is determined the day before building permit, so much higher value. So, again, if we're trying to maximize recovery under this revenue tool, we can move to valuing the land the day before building permit and recover additional funds. Next slide, please. And so, to really summarize what you're currently doing, so there's no bylaw currently, with respect to consents and subdivisions, if you're taking the cash, it's at $2,000 per lot. If you're actually receiving the physical land, you are using the 5% for subdivisions for residential, and 2% for non-residential. Moving to the recommended approach, what we're looking at is for those consents, it would be a charge per unit that we've calculated, I'll share in the next slide. Similarly, that would be the same thing for site plans or non-subdivision developments. The one difference here is for subdivisions, we would be utilizing 5% of the value of the land, but we would continue to do that using Section 51.1, so valuing it at the time of the agreement. And that's because going from $2,000 per lot up to the day before building permit would be a substantial change for the development community. So, this kind of phases in that approach. And so, to make sure we're not having this large issue of jumping the rates, and also ensuring that you're getting the money earlier in the process for subdivisions, we would be proposing 5% at the time of agreement. For the, if you're going to be taking the land, there's no change for residential, except now you can collect it from site plans. And then, as well, for the non-residential, it would be what you're allowed to in the legislation, the 2% valued at the time of building permit. Next slide, please. And so, so again, hearing from the community, hearing from staff who would be dealing with this on the ground, something to provide a more simpler approach for developers that come in with those consents or through a site plan, is that we've calculated this per-unit charge. So, taking a look at land values provided by an appraiser, looking at average densities for these different types of developments, we could come up with this per-unit charge. It's included in the bylaw that if a developer or builder comes forward, and they think, oh, well, this is too high of a charge, they are able to go get an appraisal done and pay 5% as per the legislation. So, again, something just to simplify, and this is really the only difference from where we were a year ago. Next slide, please. And so, in the bylaw, there are some exemptions. So, town buildings or structures, all institutional developments, that would include schools, would be exempt. If you're going to replace a building, and you're not going to add any residential units, or you're not going to add any floor space for non-residential development, there would be no charge, because there's no incremental need. If you're going to enlarge a residential unit but add no additional units, again, no charge if they're temporary uses. And then, lastly, similar to the development charge legislation, you can add up to two ARUs in a single semi or a rowhouse. You don't have to pay development charges. Similarly, you're exempt from Parkland Dedication, and that's a mandatory exemption in the legislation. And with that, next slide, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beggs. Anything else?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make one amendment. In the bylaw that we're seeking to adopt tonight, we noticed one minor typo that we need to correct. So, item 10D in the bylaw, in the proposed bylaw for adoption, reads 18 months, and it should be 24 months instead.
Thank you. Members of council, any questions or comments? Councilor Carrick?
So, just from understanding, this streamlines it a lot more efficiently, and brings it more together, this bylaw, as we move forward? Does that make sense?
Yeah, through the mayor. So, yeah, that makes sense. I think the intent here as well is that all the municipalities are now moving towards having a standard policy with the Parkland Dedication Bylaw, which is really just following what you're able to do under the legislation. Currently, what you're doing is not minimum, but it could be enhanced, and you could be collecting more through Parkland Dedication to meet your targets. And I think as the Parks Master Plan is more rounded out and completed, you'll start to see, well, here are the targets. And if we're going to achieve those targets, if we're not collecting it through this means, we're going to have to increase taxes to recover that additional amount.
Just one more follow-up then. So, I like the idea that the other municipalities are on board with this, too, because that makes it a lot easier to be more uniformed across the board. And I think that works very well. Thank you.
Councilor Burns?
I have two questions, one to administration. What do we collect today?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So, we were collecting $750 per unit. Through recent negotiations and appraisal work, we were able to increase that to $2,000 a unit as a standard practice. And then, we see the proposed rates in the Parkland Dedication Bylaw this evening.
Thank you. I guess when I look, your worship, to Mr. Watson's group, so when I look at the proposed development charge for the other municipalities around us, they go basically from 42 to a low of 19.5. How do you justify those figures? So, in, Lake Shore pays $42,000 for a round figure, and then, Leamington's at 19.4. And we're in the middle at 40,000, 41,000. So, how do those numbers come about? And will that make us less competitive with development in these areas, us being at the higher end?
So, through the mayor. So, the development charge is a function of a number of services. And so, this is going to include things like water, wastewater, roads, parks and recreation, all of the services that we're able to incorporate into a development charge bylaw. There are some certain factors to consider. When we're looking at Leamington, they had a moratorium on development charges up until just a couple of years ago. And so, when they came back with development charges, their development charge may be lower than their full capital needs might be. When we look at someone like Lake Shore, there's a lot of capital needs in the water wastewater area, very expensive treatment plants and such, which would drive the need for that development charge. And so, similarly with the other municipalities, it really depends on what the requirement is of the developer as well. So, as part of a development charge, there's a local service policy. And what that says is everything under this bar, the developer is required to pay for themselves, right? And so, for in your subdivision, that could be all the local mains up to 400 millimeters, or off-site mains as well, if it's needed for that subdivision. Whereas, in another municipality, we might put that into the development charge. So, although the development charge number might look higher, the actual cost of the developer may or may not be higher. It really depends on the local infrastructure. So, it's really a function of the infrastructure needs for that community. And then, in terms of competitiveness, what we find is the relative share of a house price in these charges. These charges are in the range of, historically, about 5% to 6%, and they haven't changed over time. And so, what we've actually seen across the provinces, the share of a house price for development charges has decreased over time. And so, in terms of competitiveness, I haven't seen any issue with competitiveness relative to these charges, because the developers know that they need these infrastructure to support the development.
Thank you. Just one further follow-up, I guess, to administration, through your worship. Is this town-wide as the day we approve it, or is this just going to be for the Howard-Beaufort area?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It will be town-wide as the day we approve it. And can I just add to Mr. Abbs' response related to the DCs? Your question, Councilor Burns, is a timely question, because we are going to be looking at a DC update in 2025. Mr. Langloy and Jonathan and myself will be undertaking the DC update for the municipality, and we will go through quite a bit of that background material that Daryl had highlighted.
Thank you. Councilor Renault?
I wanted to thank you for your report. You know, it seemed like a lot of work got done a year ago and before that. And I think we've all talked around the table at some point about, you know, the fact that $750 really doesn't buy you anything anymore. And it is a huge departure from that. And it's even a huge departure from the update that we have. But the fact of the matter is, is that if we're going to have a thriving parkland system in LaSalle, we have to fund it somehow. And it should be on the people that are coming, and on the new developments. So, I thank you for this, and I will make the motion that we approve.
No other questions or comments? Okay. Move, Councilor Carrick, support? Councilor Renault, all in favor? Matt Carries. Item two. Before I support it, can I read the wording of that? Do you want me to read the wording of it correctly? So, just so everyone's aware, that the recommendation would be that the Director of Planning and Development dated January 7, 2025 regarding the proposed Parkland Dedication Bylaw be received, and that a council adopts a proposed Parkland Dedication Bylaw with the correction at paragraph 10D to reflect that 24 months, not the 18 months. Okay? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item two, encroachment policy update. And we'll have our paralegal, Ms. O'Donnell. There you are. Take it over.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the proposed changes to the current encroachment policy, which will keep with the intent of the current encroachment policy. So, the policy was first implemented in 2007, and following a review of the policy, we're seeking to repeal and replace it. The central focus of the updates made are to clarify the responsibilities and the requirements to maintaining a valid encroachment, address unauthorized encroachments, and to define the enforcement mechanisms that are available for non-compliance. So, currently, many of the authorized encroachments are not in compliance with insurance requirements, which are stipulated in their agreements. The enhancement to the policy addresses these risk management gaps. These changes are necessary to clean up current encroachments, address the new encroachments that we may have, and to deal with unauthorized use of town-owned land. The new policy begins with definition sections, and this is to ensure that there's a clear understanding of the language that's going to be used throughout the policy. Section four outlines the policy, which includes delineating the responsibilities of each department for consistency across all applications, the encroachment implementation process, which summarizes the application review for new encroachments, and that includes next steps if administration were to reject an application. It also includes the insurance requirements for maintaining the valid encroachment agreement, and what will occur if administration discovers unauthorized use of town-owned land, which could include ceasing all use of the land or entering which could include ceasing all use of the land or entering into an agreement. Section four point five is a general section. So, this will highlight that the town allowing the use of its land will not create a vested interest by the owner using the land, the encroaching party, and that existing compliant authorized encroachments will be permitted to continue use. And then we get to four point six, which is the enforcement section. This is newly created, and it provides regulatory measures for non-compliant or unauthorized use of town-owned land. This includes removing the encroachment if necessary and recovering the costs associated with us removing the encroachment. It also highlights that administration will be able to enter onto the encroachment land to determine if it's in compliance. This section also includes a restatement of the agreement if the owner complies after a suspension is issued. Section four point seven outlines the fees. We didn't include this, but an option would be that we could require a yearly renewal fee. Some municipalities and surrounding municipalities do allow that. We haven't included this in the policy, but it is an option. And I just want to highlight that the primary focus of the policy update is to balance private property interests against public safety, preserving lands for future strategic planning, and managing the potential legal risks involved with using town-owned land. We're not changing the intent of the policy. We're just consolidating the existing practices into the policy so everybody's aware of the process and potential enforcement measures. And thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Counselor Carrick?
Just to quickly refresh my memory, sorry, memory. What's a standard encroachment? Or what we consider regular encroachment?
So, through you, Madam Mayor. Historically, they've been allowed for fences, pools, but we're going to try to keep with just driveway usage. And this is if all other avenues have been explored, there's no other options. We'll authorize an encroachment agreement and ensure that there's insurance requirements in place, and this will protect the town for risk management in case there was ever any injuries or anything were to happen.
If I could just jump in and add to that. The reason that we are moving away from encroachments for pools and fences and whatnot, a lot of that nowadays is covered through easements that we have in the rear properties, where we have infrastructure such as sanitary pipes or those kind of things. So, we already have any encroachments covered through our easement language, so we can deal with that measure. So, to your question, in terms of encroachments, say a house is next to an unopened road allowance, and that's where their driveway comes in, and that's what we're looking more or less to cover here, and that's what the majority that we have currently are.
Thank you, your worship.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Burns?
Yes. And the easement, there's a need in the back, and there's utilities there. They can't build anything on that easement, as I understand, through your worship.
That's correct. And then, you know, over time, some people have done that, and there is language in our easement documents that says, not withstanding the above, even if somebody, we say, you can't do ABC. If you've done ABC, we can still go in, remove it, and deal with that at your cost. So, we do have coverage in that respect.
Final question would be, I have an existing agreement that I've signed twenty years ago. You find that my agreement now is outdated, and you want now for me to enter a new agreement with a new language. And my question is to you, who pays for that and why?
Through you, Madam Mayor. At this point, we wouldn't be looking at changing anybody's language. We're more just looking to ensure that the municipality is covered for any risks, which would be maintaining valid insurance requirements. And the agreements are attached to the house, so it carries through with the house, not with the individual owners. So, we wouldn't be entering into any new agreement, say the house was sold.
Through you, worship, I didn't quite hear you. I guess my simple question is, do I pay or does the town pay? To update the agreement that I have?
Sorry, he just didn't hear the response. If you could just get closer. Sorry, if you can just get closer, just so we can hear you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. We aren't going to be looking at updating anybody's encroachment. There wouldn't be a cost associated with that. Right now, we're just looking at maintaining valid insurance to cover the town against any risks.
Thank you, and I apologize for my hearing level. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, the recommendations of the report of the paralegal dated January third, 2025, the eighty-two thousand twenty-five dash zero one, regarding updates to the encroachment policy be received, and that the current encroachments policy be repealed, and that a new and updated encroachment policy be adopted. Moved by Deputy Macripada, supported by Counselor Renault, all in favor? And that carries. Thank you very much. Item three is the health travel grant motion. So, I'm going to read the recommendation, and if there are questions, we can cover it afterwards. So, whereas the Northern Health Travel Grant Program, the program offers financial assistance to Northern Ontario residents who need to travel long distance for specialized medical services or procedures at a ministry-funded healthcare facility. And whereas the grants for this program are based on the distance, residents must travel to reach the nearest medical specialist or ministry-funded healthcare facility. And whereas residents must travel at least one hundred kilometers one way to access the nearest medical specialist or ministry-funded healthcare facility for services that are not available locally to qualify for the grant. And whereas there are many occasions in which residents of Windsor-Essays County must travel at least one hundred kilometers one way to access healthcare facilities or services that are not available locally. And whereas there are four primary children's hospitals across the province, located in London, Hamilton, Toronto, and Ottawa, and none of these facilities are within one hundred kilometers of Windsor-Essays County. And where has it been reported that more than five thousand times each year, pediatric patients across Windsor-Essays County must drive to London Health Sciences Centre for treatment at its children's hospital, which places a financial strain on families and caregivers. Now, therefore, the town of La Salle calls upon the provincial government and Ministry of Health to establish a grant system similar to the Northern Health Travel Grant Program in Windsor-Essays County to provide support to the residents of Windsor-Essays County when they need to travel long distance for specialized medical services or procedures at a ministry-funded healthcare facilities, and that this motion be circulated to all municipalities for support. Premier Dogford, MPP Anthony Liardi, Minister of Health, and Deputy Premier, Ms. Sylvia Jones. So, if I can get someone who would like to move in second, and we want to talk about it further, we can. Moved by Deputy Mary Capata, support Counselor Renault. Any questions or comments on what's being presented today? Deputy Mary Capata?
Through your worship, when I read this, I like it. And I've got some friends, like we all do, that have gone up and down the slab to take care of family. So, let's treat everybody equally, which doesn't mean you treat them the same, but let's the province recognize where their responsibilities are. And I'm very proud of the town to reach out on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Carrick?
Sorry. I agree with everything that's been said. I agree with everything that's said. So, there's going to be an election. So, can we bring this back in case the bodies change? So that we can make this motion to the new government? Does that make sense? Depending if it does change?
So, are you asking, we have two options here. We can wait and hold it, we can approve it, but hold it back from sending it out until after the election, which the election is supposed to be the end of February. So, this would be circulated in the beginning of March. Or we can circulate it now. However, if a new government is formed at the end of February, we would probably have to consider bringing it back and sending it out again.
So, I would like us to send, just in case they do get back, and they can hit the ground running. And if they don't, sorry. I would like to send it so we can hit the ground running. The new government can hit the ground running. Send it now, and then if there is another government formed, then we can visit that process secondly. Does that make sense? Okay.
Counselor Burns?
Yes. And further to this, I'd like it to be circulated to all towns, not across Ontario, but in Essex County. And it certainly should go to Mr. Downey as well. He is in Essex County, and he is a representative, so that we, the mayors will know, and hopefully, they'll support it as well because it is a big expense. And I've known people, I think every one of us know people, who've had to go through that, either get a special ambulance, get something, or ask a friend to go up to London or whatever and stay overnight. So, it is quite expensive. So, thank you for the initiative.
Thank you. And any other comments, questions? No? I thank you for the support on this one. We've all said we know someone, or we've had family members who've had to make those trips. And it's not usually one trip, it's usually multiple trips, and it's very straining mentally and financially on families. So, I think this is a very important initiative, and I agree with Counselor Burns. If we could add Mr. Dowey, I guess, to the list, and Mr. Liardi, is there anyone else? I think those are the only two currently.
I think the local, the local mayors in Essex County, including the city of Windsor.
They'd be part of the municipalities that are being sent.
That way, they can either pass a similar motion and know what we're doing and support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All in favor? And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item I, which is the consent agenda. There are three separate items, and then three inside the correspondence. Is there anything anyone wants to pull out separately? If not, if I can get a motion to move all three? Counselor Renault, support. Counselor Burns, all in favor? And that carries unanimously. There are no committee matters. Any questions or statements by council members? Deputy Mary Capata?
Thank you, your worship. Today, while at my workplace, I was walking across the way and being recognized as your second-in-command, a citizen asked me a question. I understand that another municipal mayor is joining a council or is moving forward to support their municipality with cross-border mayors. I would hope, Madam Mayor, that you are invited or you're aware of something is going to happen. And I just wanted to let you know that this resident is fully supportive of you representing the town of La Salle should a cross-border mayor invitation come to you. So, just wanted to make that aware, and hopefully, the residents seen that I've delivered the message to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for delivering the message. I'm going to have to do some research now because I'm unsure. No. So, we'll look into it. Thank you. Counselor Carrick, did you have something? And then Counselor Burns?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Through you, to our fire chief and everybody else that helped make it happen. At work, I have several residents that live in La Salle, and quite a few live out by Station Number Two. And they are very pleased and feel much safer with the fire department actually out there now, the new digs. So, I just wanted to pass that on, and they felt very comfortable in it, and they feel it was the right decision. Thank you.
Counselor Burns?
Thank you, your worship. I would like to make a motion of notice that, seeing that I overwent my expenditures for the year of 2024, I would like the excess to be extracted from the financial limit for 2025. And I would here make that request and have it dealt forward by policies and council. Thank you.
Before I get to that, that is going to be under notices of motion. Are there any other questions or statements? Okay. So, we have now the notice of motion. And Counselor Burns, if you have that written out, if you could send that to the clerk to make sure that it's recorded correctly? Thank you very much. Okay. We don't have a closed session to report out tonight, so next is our bylaws. And that's our bylaw twenty-two-five dash zero-one-three be added as addendum item. And so, our recommendation is that the following bylaws be given a first, second, and third reading and finally passed. And that's bylaw two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-five, a bylaw to provide for the dedication of parkland or the payment in lieu thereof for all development or redevelopment in the town. Two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-eight, a bylaw to authorize the execution of the Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement with His Majesty the King in Right of Ontario and the incorporation of the Town of La Salle under the Fire Protection Grant. Twenty-two-five zero-zero-nine, a bylaw to confirm the donation of lots three-five-one to three-five-three and lots three-six-seven to three-six-eight, registered plan seven-three-four from Seesaw Agnes Glue. And then two-zero-two-five dash zero-one-zero, a bylaw to confirm the donation of lots three-five-four to three-five-six and lots three-six-four to three-six-six, registered plan seven-three-four from Susan Evans. Two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-one, a bylaw to reappoint a hearing officer pursuant to the administrative monetary penalty system. And bylaw two-zero-two-five dash zero-one-two, a bylaw to amend the subdivision agreement with two-six-zero-one-three-seven-zero Ontario Incorporated. And finally, two-zero-two-five dash zero-one-three, a bylaw of the incorporation of the Town of La Salle to authorize the borrowing upon mortifying debentures in the principal amount of nine million towards the cost of Fire Station Number Two. Counselor Carrick, support. Counselor Renault, all in favor? And that carries unanimously. Our confirmatory bylaw, two-zero-two-five dash zero-one-eight, be given a first, second, and third reading and finally passed. Counselor Richard Spagnolo and Counselor Burns, all in favor? And that carries. Schedule of meetings listed below. Thank you for joining us in person and online tonight. Have a good night.